Can we make our way into the hall?
Abenakom.
Because I want us to be seated so that we can try and begin with the proceedings for this afternoon.
Ak wakrahdat i sotplaka anyamsolat ons kambakan medhi verugtunge fani namerach.
Masamenuklala panzig e banbagu tuguenzel basi kwazuku banke program yeto ya senfagumi. De abonakuan aban dabasa fo leo fo ukuti apa panze. Eh, abanyabange na banyabangola panze. Saba banga ave benge na aba bangola.
Leave it on, they will do it. So are we standing here?
Yeah.
Okay, we are not standing.
Eh, order chief whip, order. Eh, the chief whip of the Western Cape, order sir. I just want to keep you in confidence. Eh, so that I can take you with us as you are seated in front here. That we can steer this ship together. The panelists, as we supposed to have them seated here. There is an expectation that there will be eh at least one as per the program. The district mayor if he happens to be able to join us here. But I'm told, I'm told that he is not here. What I need to explain to you. And obviously I will explain this also as long as people are still coming in. We're dealing with energy. And, and the item being energy is a national competency. So if you don't have the National Minister of Energy present here. Then who are you going to ask your question to? But also the minister at the provincial level who also depends on the legislation. As per the national eh legislation would actually give credence to what provinces must do. Will not be with us. So we'll, we'll give people an opportunity to ask questions and record the questions. And I can tell you that we'll go as far as we can. But we're not going to keep people for the whole day or for the whole night. Eh, because we have to. We'll just ask questions, we'll just allow them to ask questions eh as far as we can. And then afterwards eh allow the chairperson of the National Council of Provinces. An opportunity to address this august session. And then hopefully we'll end sooner. You know, so that we can go and have a beautiful afternoon and enjoy Ozon. Don't you want to visit Ozon and say how beautiful Ozon is? And eat ostrich and stuff like that?
Damis nerdo ositane kubda di national minister fani enerhi soywes omdat enerhi eindlaka befutite. Bekwame fani national regierung is. Ongelukhagasti minister ni irni. And work eh di aliar for enerhi for the west cap is dance ni irni. Eh, ma osasama solankbakan om fra fani ba makartemak. And then eh sanos dot later bahando.
Molwenke alenchigalanga nandje ngoku nisasi. Ngoku umbawe agenda alenchigalanga so tetan gumbawe zamanza. Gelishwa ke ngatumpatiswa wesamanzwa wesizwa. Akeko kodwa ke apa kuikliza. Ke uba msam kukoso tolopokoyo. Angakwazuku pendula lomba lovo. Kodwa ke enfagoba nibuzemi bozo. Sisonika ke ngoku usala we pungalesizwa lama pondo. Uma mumoti se ati kabakaba, pa na pa, ngus.
Alright, thank you very much.
Bye danke.
Oh sir, you can carry on?
Yeah, bye danke.
Gonna translate the laugh as well. I would like to hear that in Afrikaans. Alright eh.
Ak sama probiere.
Pa ya danke sir. Eh, di, di zaukaylagen dobandi nazisuba sungoba aniti na apa ngapambi.
I will take this opportunity to introduce the panelists on the table.
Ak sali gelendet gebraik om di paneleleda opdi verugvofestau.
Aye, aye, not the panelists. The presiding officers or the coaches.
Di zautateltu bagen nazis e yama kama osisala basoto bak tropel e len di banu alenchigalanga.
Di fursatende baamtis.
Di ikamalam gumasizole mngasela.
My name is Masizole Mngasela.
My name is Mosisoli Mngasela.
You're doing very well. I give you 10 out of 10. Most people don't get that's the name right the first time. They must practice and practice. Eh, I am the chairperson of the Standing Committee on Local Government in the Western Cape Provincial Parliament.
Di ngusisalo ke we committee eh chongende no maspala basema khaya. Pa ya kwinzwi wiso mte to yanchona koloni.
Ak is di fursatet fani stande komitie op plaslaka regierung in di west cap regierung.
Diamba geapa notawam.
Eh, I'm accompanied by my colleague.
Ak wotfokasal de my kuliacha.
Uba o uma kuye.
His name is Honorable Makuye.
Is achbaro makuye.
Oh, usala we select Committee on Trade and International Relations.
He is the chairperson of Select Committee on Trade and International Relations.
Is di fursatet fani stande komitie op handel in internationale betrakena.
Na angukubao sisebenza kunya.
We are working together, you can see he's just next to me.
Oswerksam isina isneti langsmay.
Pam basikaleges zaugestebe patmanditi kuninonke namgelegile.
Before we start we'll have a little bit of caucus. But I must say that we welcome all of you here.
Eh. Fwerat ons bakhan, etonsbikiha caucus, ma ak wali grah amali so verwelkom.
The chairperson of the National Council of Provinces, Uma modise, in his absence here.
Eh, sinayake no mama usala we pungalesizwa lama pondo. Uma mumoti so kodwa kakabi kongo kapapakati wetu.
But also the deputy.
Fursatet fani national raad fani provinces, achbar modise.
Also who deputy chairperson of National Council of Provinces also in his absence, Obautau.
Also eh we have amongst us the deputy chairperson of National Council of Provinces. Honorable Artaitau in his absence here.
And the eh honor fursatet fani raad fani provinces, national raad fani provinces, achbaran tau, wakansay afyeshahayt.
The chief whip of the National Council of Provinces.
Eh, sinayake no betle shiwepungalesizwa lama pondo, una ukona pakati wetu.
Di wipswep fani national raad fani provinces.
And all members of the National Council of Provinces.
Namalungu ke asicitrin na epungalesizwa lama pondo. Akona pakati wetu nanga atenwatalala apa ngapami.
And all the leader fani national raad fani provinces.
Speakers of provincial parliaments.
Sinaboke no somlo mo, be parlamentes lama pondo.
Speakers fani provincial parliament.
The chief whips and the whips of the provincial parliaments.
Sinaboke abapetle shukunya ke nabapetle shibe committee benzo wiso mte to lama pondo.
All members of provincial legislators.
Di eh wipswepenswepe in all the leader fani provincial vetriabers.
Wa kunyake nawo onka amalungu benzo wiso mte to emapundrin.
I also welcome the speakers of municipalities in this province.
Siya bamke lake no somlo mo bo maspala besisi tili.
Ak verwelkom opdi speakers fani municipalite fani west cap.
The mayors and deputy mayors and all councillors are welcome.
Siya bamke lake osotolopu, no sekala osotolopu, kunya no teba, siya bamke la ngoku nchalo.
Salka Western Cape, you are welcome.
Di is amal welcome here, di burgmeisters, di adyong burgmeisters and all the raadsleda.
Si bamke la kwa konake nabet omkhula kwa salka yanchona koloni.
Ogokribela and most importantly.
Ogokribela no rokbalake kakul.
And the belangakte.
In ngoke lizoksala kunya nabasa libonke be edin district.
We also welcome the local leaders and the community at large of edin district.
And os verwelkom opdi layers and the community of fani erden dostrek.
You are the most important people today.
Is the belangrexti mensen fana.
Basali ke ningabona bandu babaluleke kakul ukuti namshange.
You are our VIPs.
Yalos ons bebe peers.
Ningabadaba kul.
So, you are all welcome, molweni. Huiya midach. Good afternoon. Pa ya danke. Kri namshali kri na. Kri namshali kri na. Kansiti abantu ninaniti kukala, abantu. Kukala. Abantu. Kukala. Usalotuma moti se kase lava ngapambi lati yes mngasela you are correct. Because ideally ministers should be sitting here responding to you. Because you are the important people.
Gorokelike klayo kebek fambas naba partiswa abakoyo ruzo pendula. Imibuzi yenu kubani balulegele kakuluni na band.
Eh, narachte muss ministers no inegirkesatet um verite antwort on is the belangrexti mensen fana.
Eh, we will continue though because our agenda is the NCOP taking parliament to the people.
Si zaku kobeke kake kuba inchongose tunje ngelpungalesizwa lama pondo. Kukusisa i parliamente bandwin.
Ma osalferkan met os agenda as national raad fani provinces, namlek om di parliament na di mensen tutuniam.
And we will do just that, we'll bring this parliament to you.
Sizo kwenza kengoloshobos zakuwizisa i parliamente apa kun.
And that's precisely what ons kan dun, ons bring ni parliament na yala tu.
Okay, eh besi kukula, no mamutihale. Eh, andiasbisazneda kanga na nilonto mamutihale, hepati. I just hope that it assists. The request is. Eh, the request is that the mayors were present. Eh, if there are questions that are posed in line with their respective areas, be able to respond.
Adashe fersook dati burgmeisters tak asda frait pat betrakenet op alle municipalite. Dat alle dan sal antwort asablif.
Now I see ke, I'm, I'm not even done with my statement but their hands rising. Eh, let me just finish. The, the request is as follows. Now you can listen to this request and then you can tell me what you want to say. It's if the chief whip of the Western Cape is saying no. But the request by Mamutihale is that those mayors come sit in the front. And, and deal, no let me just finish before you translate there. But my problem with that request is that this is a national competency. Escom is not a municipal issue. Energy is not a municipality issue. And as members of parliament sitting here, we know that. So what we would rather have as a situation. And as, as a presiding officer now as a court director here of the program. Is that people vent out and tell us. And then we'll record their ventilation. If there's any minister that arrives, they will respond to the questions. Am, am I still with you members, honourable members? Are we still fine? That's not from my colleagues, are we fine? So that we don't have a situation where the question is asked to a mayor about Escom, they cannot answer anything. Or about a particular issue, they will, they may not answer on any of those. But we will take the questions as they come and I think Uba Omakuye will also attest to the fact that we're not gonna simply say let's stop this. And then as we continue, we then decide at what stage do we stop. And hopefully it will be very sooner than later. But we'll also be graced by the address by the chairperson of the National Council of Provinces, Mamotise. And then attain at that stage. Are we all fine honourable members? This is now for us, we're talking to you. Are we happy? Alright, I see I recognize Honorable Maseko.
Da wasse fersook gewes dati burgmeister si vorkom set. Ma enerhi is ni endek bekwame of verantwurlikaid fani municipalite ni. Dat is a national eh verantwurlikaid. And darum ba uns di ministers here got it. Ma eh, ons kan ama fort omi fra te stalen. And os dana fersook on di leader fani national raad fani provinces om so fair as moonlek as, as aller dit kan dun. Di fra te beantwort.
Di zotike ngoku pegisa ku malungu epungalesizwa lama pondo. Kuba yakladondo banake imikimbe fana neza manza, oh Escom. Iba imiba ye sizwa kaswellonke, ayke yo maspala. Kodwa ke ngoku ndesow yenzatina, abantu abalapa sobanikituba lobababuzi imibuzo. Ukwenze ndobanake lo imibuzo msami si shikilale sipale panzi. Kwaye kesizo kufuwiso kuba umpat u, usisala we pungalesizwa lama pondo. Uma mumoti se naye uzwa kuteta nati. Di abonake ilungu mama Maseko ingatu funu kupefumla.
No, thank you very much. I mean, we can't even have that suggestion. I'm not expecting we can have that suggestion because yesterday it was clear. Who's supposed to be at the front there? Only executive. There is a member of parliament that was removed there standing for the minister. So the mayor is not the national executive member. So if there's not anyone who's representing, let's take their questions. File them with the NCOP and then they'll get the response. There's not anyone who's going to sit there per the instruction that was given yesterday. It was clear who's supposed to be on those chairs, thank you.
Dat, dat is ongelukhag ni anfarbani, di, di fursalat di burgmeister da vorsetni. Dat is net fil leda fani eh national regierung. Omdat enerhi fal oner di verantwurlikide fani national regierung.
Ngokompo posho wa izolo, ke kwa tata ndoba abonabanu manelunge, lo lokutala paytaflen ba pendulumibuzo. Kabapa ti sokanya isitkaheba. Ngoko ke di pagamisai ndoba silsala kwe soskrip.
Eh, eh, chairperson, chairperson.
What I want to ask, yes I've recognized you Honorable Ace.
Thank you.
And in recognizing you, I've got a request. That in the meantime whilst we're talking here. The whips of the National Council of Provinces go and sit down and resolve this mess.
No, I want to make a proposal, chairperson.
And then allow you to continue sir.
Yes, thank you very much, Honorable Chairpersons. I think when we look at the community that's here today. They're the local people from local municipalities. And the issues really around energy is the electricity supplied via the municipality. To the people of the different municipalities. So I think it's very appropriate that we get the executive mayors sitting there. And answering the questions of the community around engine and issues. They want to hear the supply of electricity to their homes. Not Escom to their homes by the mayor and the municipality. So I think let's proceed and let's get the mayors there to answer the questions.
Yeah, ak think das ba eh, tu pasluka fersook dati burgmeisters and adyong burgmeisters opi verug moet set. Want di onerwep at ons bespek is di verskaffung fani enerhi deer municipalite. On di verbreukers, dat wot ni rechstrekst deer Escom oni verbreuker verskaffni. And darum denke ak is it yaltamal tu pasluk dati burgmeisters opi verug set. And i fra beantwort wat di burgers tel.
Di akri ngakba kuba ke ngumbalo okrapazela abashali. Imiba ye fana ne mi ba ne nchalo nchalo. Kuba legilenda ba obasina ye osotolopu olapa. Kuba kalukunga ababandu osotolopa onelokanduva. Lokuchonga nanengakisomba ne nchalo nchalo. Baba konosotolop, sitela babe paytaflen ba kwazuku pendulumibuzo. Nasu isamis pagamis.
Eh, I've got, I've got to give feedback to my request that I made. Eh, thank you honourable members for expressing your views.
Ak muterakke na di fersook alak gestalit, abaydanke achbaro leda for di menangs wat i gelohet.
The respective whips had a session now, as I requested that they do so. From the NCOP.
Di eh onaskayaswepe is now in setting, akit flada talabi yonkom.
Si naboke abapetle shi abasukaki NCOP nandje ngoko se sama ke ukusingatalomba.
But anyway, the, the original proposition was made by Mamutihale. And she's of the opinion that we, we carry on. And then we record questions as I suggested earlier. That which then will go back to the respective eh authorities as questions will come. And I think the longer we discuss this, the longer we delay unnecessarily. But the best to do now is to continue. And the, and the officials will record as and when questions come. And subsequently, questions will then be referred accordingly. That is my ruling from the front, thank you. We're now going to the question session.
Di usprunk, di fursalwas fani achbaro dikhale. And dat is dat i fra nou gestal wot. And dat it angeteken wot. And dat it verwais wot na di tu pasluka oberede wat it dan kan beantwort.
Okes pagamis, okes kama mutihale, yene betribisa ndoba. Kujake kwe kubuzi imibuzo. Bazake abo bandu ba, ovanya bandu skreba bafanaleklayo. Banikui tuba ke msamba bapendulumibuzo. Kodwa ke uba kukomi imibuzo, etzuliswe kuba partiswa batile. Is ekorekhotwa, isikilalele. Okwa ngoku kuse sisa mutlabila mka ma, sokalisage ngoku sige neseshon imibuz.
And as yenahe fani ministers fani national regierung noch obdacht, dann sal alle yerope verug kom set.
Oh fine, super. Ek den, gooymuddag, damis nyerer, leda fani eh itvoirende bestier. Eh, municipalite. And work fani national raad fani provinces.
Good afternoon ladies and gentlemen and eh members of the municipal management and also eh members of the NCOP.
Molweni alenchigalanga, di bulisa malungu epungalesizwa lama pondo. NCOP nga ma fuchane. Abalau libomaspala kunya no osotolobo maspala. Na basali ndaba bulisa ngoku banzi.
For the leader fani publikent besonder, will ons eh die gelendet gebraik maak, om yala tu te spre.
And for the members of the public, we want to use this opportunity to address you.
Kunike basali zautataka iltubaloba, si futela nana niseta tetane, genmiba etzisibuunzi.
Namens ons di program direkteere velos net twedengese.
And I'm on behalf of the program directors, we just want to raise two issues.
Ti nagendje ngaba patinkubo, singa malungu kasonpeglayo. Sizo kukrapazela le miba mi bi ni, ilande layo.
Di ersa is dat ons verantwurlikaid is om di program te direkteer. And ons etni verantwurlikaid for we here prakne.
The first thing is that we as program directors, we have the then responsibility to see who, who's speaking, who speaks here.
Ti nagendje ngaba patinkubo, sinelunge lo loktensegi sa ndoba, kubano nelunge lo lokteeta.
Ma omdat onsself ook politike leurs is and verantwurlikas an yala. Will ons in onse wudanaghaid as program direkteere verskuning maak. Dat di persona wat endlik gefra was, om yala tu te spre, ni vandag here asne.
But because we are also politicians, we want to ask on behalf of the persons who were here. Supposed to be here to answer questions. That we want to apologize on their behalf.
Ti nagendje ngosopolitiki se askon dimewes tile. Uba kukama lungu eskrebam sambe, enkange koyo apa, ukosa ku pendula imibuzo. Sitela ke ukuti ekamen labo, sitingwey kuluon daau.
Eh, amen, get that. Masku benguku. First question.
Ketasfran for di este fra. Di. Ekanital prad fani west cap.
I'm gonna speak the language of the Western Cape.
Da wajainko ben tetului molsetens waka kula pensona kolon.
Alle Afrikaans fani Zaid Cap.
And the Africans of the Southern Cape.
Na weta le Afrikaans isipulu salapa esu de ekapa.
Ik is Colin Claussen.
I am Colin Claussen.
Dingo Colin oka kla si.
Alle nomai di flagman in outswor.
They, I am known as the flagman.
Apa es torunes muni ben da suwa indota e petele fleki. Yakowe tu zimfane losa meso.
Ik et net twemanite.
I only have two minutes to state my case.
Zemi bi ne obanteet.
And ek will and ek kan di panel respektier.
And I will respect the panel.
Da wasolipa aba ngapambili ekongi.
Er groot di national eh.
I request that the next person to talk here must talk about the issue of electricity or the issue of energy.
Danke voor die vrouw die nog niet heeft gesproken. Ik wil niet dat ook weet dat de onderwerp van morgense bespreking is energie.
All right, Engo is die, u gaat er maar.
Je kunt procent.
Ik ben George.
Non piti se losaule, I am from George.
En ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
I want to speak about what caused me to be here. It has got nothing to do with electricity. It's about my house. In my house, the water enters the house all these years.
Wat ik wil proberen te zeggen was energie. De reden waarom ik hier is, is om mijn huis te gaan. En het feit dat mijn huis lekker is en altijd vol water is.
Dan kan ik de nummers van Zuma zitten. Die zijn mensen die in de buurt van mijn huis zijn.
Another year, I even phoned Father Zuma when I was summoned. Man, my house was full of water.
Engo is die. Oké, translate, interpret, and then I'm going to talk after that.
Goed. Ik wil niet zeggen dat ik jaren geleden ook dat Zuma heb gebeld en verontelijkert van het probleem wat ik heb met de locatie in mijn huis en dat mijn huis altijd onder water is.
This is my special plea, and please listen to me very carefully.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Die is mijn speciale versuch, en ik wil heerst dat jullie allemaal bij je nooit leest.
This does not in any way presupposes that all the other issues are not important.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Wat ik nooit zeg, is dat alle andere kwesties niet zo belangrijk zijn als het wat ons hier bespraken.
But since Monday morning, we've been dealing with a various number of issues based on the program as it is before us.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Vanaf maandag heeft ons verschillende kwesties gehandeld wat specifiek op het programma is, en ons heeft volgens het programma gegeven.
Now, I have no authority to change the program.
Ik heb niet de macht om het programma te veranderen.
And I don't intend to change the program.
Ja, ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Ik heb niet de macht om het programma te veranderen.
And I don't intend to change the program.
Ja, ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
En ik heb ook geen plan om het programma te veranderen.
So what I'm going to request briefly is that the officials from the N C O P, please, the questions that are pressing, that are outside the parameters of energy, be written down and be given to the tables with the details of individuals so that they can be kept out. That is what we will do today.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Mijn versuch aan de ambtenaren van een N R V P is om die vraag neer te schrijven wat niet gaan voor energie, en dat in te handen bij de tafel.
But now I need to get an indication, where can people drop their letters?
Ik wil niet weten waar.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Oké, now there's a table right at the back.
Daar is de tafel daar rech achter waar hier de geschreven vraag ingehandig kan worden.
Now.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Now you help them now, there is a person that is sitting next to you, Cece. You take the details and send it back there. That's how we're gonna proceed.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Daar is de ambtenaar achter waar die vraag zal neerschrijven.
Now back to energy, Escom.
Nu terug naar energie, een vraag voor Escom.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
When there's no more questions about energy, we'll adjourn and the chairperson will speak and then we'll say goodbye for the night. No problem. Hey, Mama, please, you can address us.
Goeiemiddag, ik ben een inwoner van Ouzoen, vijf vier.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon to everybody. I'm an inhabitant of Ouzoen in Ward 4.
Ik ben Portia Esbach.
My name is Portia Esbach.
Ik ben Portia Esbach.
Escom uitvoerende bestuur moet 63 miljoen terugbetal van bonuses.
And Escom's executive already has to pay back 60 million rand of bonuses.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. De betaal is 60 miljoen rand. Ik wil mijn bonuses verlenen.
Na dat loodshedding in 2008 begon, heeft topbase 63 miljoen in bonuses ontvangen.
And since load shedding was instituted in 2008, the executive, the Escom executive, has received bonuses of 31 million rand.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
In 2012 and 2013 werden bonuses 31 miljoen.
In 2012 and 2013, the bonuses accounted for 20 million rand, 31 million, sorry.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil mijn bonuses verlenen. Esbalolo Park had 31 miljoen rand.
De bonuses gaan gepaard met een groot solaris pakket.
And these bonuses on top of huge salary packages.
Ik wil mijn bonuses verlenen. Esbalolo Park had 21 miljoen.
Escom's top drie uitvoerende baas te verdienen 24,4 miljoen. Die Escom monopoly heeft South Africa in een van crisis gedompel.
Escom's three top executives earn 24 million rand, and the energy crisis has put South Africa in a real crisis.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
De erwandbestuur en onbevoegdheid. Elke cent van de bonuses moet terugbetaal worden.
Because of incompetence and mismanagement, every cent of those bonuses has to be repaid.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
En alle toekomstige bonuses moeten teruggehaald worden tot de crisis opgelost wordt.
And all future intended bonuses should be withheld until the crisis has been resolved.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Dan is mijn vraag van de gemeenschap, wie is verantwoordelijk voor jouw elektrische toeristing wat blaast aan jouw wonen na vitum modellum?
And then my question on behalf of the community is, who is responsible for the electrical or the electrification of your home and the equipment and the wiring? And whom do you have to address yourself to if that blows up?
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Dank je.
Engo.
Engo, sima. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. So, I'm going to ask, once we are done with energy, we want to see how many people want to ask questions on energy. Maybe you can stand up, I can see you. Just raise your hands.
Ik wil niet uitvinden to film mensen van vraag stellen voor energie. Kan jullie niet jullie handen lichop steken als ze blijven?
Oké.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Oké, so it's less than 10?
Dat lijkt als het met mijn restien mensen is.
All right. We will take all these questions, but after you spoke, the next speaker, my co-chair will come and take the next session of questions. We'll see how much time we have, because we're intending to finish as soon as we can possibly do so. Once we have taken all the questions that are coming, then we'll accommodate the general questions that will come. You remember earlier I said, no, nothing outside energy, but you continue with that process that I've explained, that you give your questions to the respective officials. But we'll still take some questions after energy, then we can wrap up immediately after that. I hope you understand me.
De vraag wat nu de meneer gesteld wordt, wat hier staan, zal de laatste van mijn sessie zijn, dan neem mijn medeanbieder oor en dan zal ons al de energie vraagvuld twee. En daarna zal ons vraag van een algemene art neem, en dan kan je vraag je voorkomst stellen.
Even al die aanmaand is to ensure that no question is not taken here. Every question must be heard. You can quit on, sir.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Goeiemiddag, ik ben George Meyer, ik ben van Diesels Dorf.
My name is George Meyer, and I'm from Diesels Dorf. Good afternoon, everyone.
Ik ben George Meyer, ik ga uit Diesels.
Mijn vraag aan de parlement is, dat daar is het evil wat in ons Dorf heers. Ons kracht wordt geblokken, wordt skuld op water, maar ons betalen ons municipale rekening, ons kracht jullie aan Escom. Zo is kracht wordt geblokken, en er is geen diensten wat dan geleverd wordt.
I just want to mention the following evil that is taking place in our community, and that is one, that our electricity is blocked. Secondly, we have a problem with water, and we do pay our accounts to Escom.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Mijn vraag verder is, waarom kan daar niet, in Diesels Dorf, in de negesetting, kracht voorzien wordt niet? Angesien daarvoor ons elke keer gezegd wordt, dat oor 20 jaar zal een heuse gebouw worden. Daarom vraag ik nou, ons wil daar aan worden, en dat is een bije ergens dag is.
The problem we have in our area is the fact that there is a lack of services. We also want to speak about housing specifically and when this extension will take place. Those are part of the questions that I would like to ask and answers that I would like to receive.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
That's all I'm saying.
Ja, blij.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Goeiedankje. Goeiedankje voor die vraag wat tot Diesels Ver gelijk was, en ook voor die commentaar. Kan ons versuch dat die volgende gruppensprekers naar die microfoenen te komen?
Thank you very much for the first series of questions, and can we ask the next members who have questions to come to the microphones, please?
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Ons letten daar al reeds persoon bij hier die microfoon hier is. Ons heraal als ze blijven die versuch, wie is zo kort een vraag als wat die mondelijk ken, wie is?
Please be as brief and quick with your question as you possibly can.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Indien ons binnen vier keer met de energiesectie kwesties afgehandel is, dan kan ons nog voor vier keer ook kijken naar andere brandpunten wat ons tot Diesels Ver nog niet afgesprekend is, want ons leidt hier die sessie vandaag.
If we've finished with the energy questions or if we have answered the energy questions by four o'clock, then we can turn our attention to other flashpoints which we haven't covered yet.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Kom ons hier dan onmiddellijk oor aan ons mudeer hier aan de linkerkant om die vraag te stellen als ze blijven.
Now to the lady on my left, and she can proceed to ask a question.
Ik ben Katrina Perle.
I'm Katrina Perle.
Van Diesels Dorf.
From Diesels Dorf.
Ik ben Katrina Osuka Ed.
Diesels Dorf, Katrina Perle.
Ik ben Katrina Perle.
Van Diesels Dorf.
Was it Diesels Dorf?
Ik wil niet lang wersen.
I don't want to take much time.
Ik wil van feite.
En dus baam tent, zo ja, apok felikonito.
And I stick to facts.
Ik is hier met de hartser, mijn mader, oor mijn gewoon geld, wat ik in uitkom niet. Mijn geld, gewoon geld.
I'm here with a sore heart on account of the money for land that I do not receive.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Mijn man is vijf jaar oud.
My husband passed away five years ago.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Mama Perle, de pentvat evil mark is bijbelangere. Maar dit klinkt niet voor mij als het over het verbanden met energie of elektriciteit niet. In welk geval ons op ons knie gaan versuch als ze blijven? Laat iemand je helpen om dit af te schrijven en dit in te handen bij die persoonen. En ons waarborgen, ons gaan die persoonen krijgen om op je versuch te reageer.
Oké.
Goeiedankje.
Goeiedankje.
Your problem is very important to us, but as far as I can hear, it's not related to energy. So I request that you find assistance, that somebody helps you to pin down the matter, and that you give it, hand it into our officials. We forward it to the relevant authorities.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
With that, can we move over to the person that has a question or comment here on my right-hand side, please?
Kan ons dan maar voortgaan naar die persoon wat vraagt hier aan mijn rechterkant als ze blijft?
Goeiemiddag, ik ben Miriam Skater van Groentbrak.
Goeiemiddag, ik ben Miriam Skater van Groentbrak.
Die bolis en Miriam Skater, Groentbrak.
My question is, I want to know, the electricity comes from Escom, but the municipality gives you, according to the Escom, if you are low consumption, you get 50 units free. Municipality gives Groentbraks people 20 units free. The people on subsidy get 50 units. People in George get 70 units.
Ik wil graag, mijn vraag is, ik wil graag weer het volgens Escom, als je op subsidies dan krijg jij 50 eenede gratis. Die municipality geeft 20 eenede gratis, en George krijgt die mensen 70 eenede gratis.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
So I want to know who determines what get what by the electricity, especially when it comes to the free units.
So ik wil weten wie bepaalt wie krijgt wat wanneer het komt bij elektriciteit, en specifiek wanneer het komt bij gratis eenede.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Dank je.
Dank je.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Goeiedankje voor die vraag. Ik denk daar het type van ongelijkheid is blij. Onze is blij dat hij dit aan ons eet wees, en ons zal dit voor je geantwoord ook krijgen.
Thank you very much for that question, and thank you for pointing out that inequality to us, and I think it's very important that it should receive attention, and we'll forward the question.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Kan ons die volgende vraag krijgen hier via mijn linkerkant als ze blijven?
Can we get the next questions here on my left?
My name is Kosi Jansen.
My name is Kosi Jansen.
Ik ben Kosi Jansen.
Ik ben program directeur.
I greet the program director.
En leerder van de N C O P.
Die bolis dat kee umpatin boobokunjen, namal lungue pungele sizo, nama pond.
And the members of the N C O P.
Ik is blij om te zien dat die is van ons plaatselijke raadsleerder.
I'm glad to see that some of our local councillors are here, present today.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Ons zit met de Groent problem.
We have a great, a big problem.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Wat handel voor de blokkering van kracht.
Which has to do with the cutting of power.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Bij van ons mensen is werkloos en is arm.
Many of our people are unemployed and poor.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
En le kanibokosten, die vastgestelde percentagebedrag wat gevraagd wordt om le kracht weer aan te zetten.
And they cannot afford to pay the percentage fee for reconnection of the electricity.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Ik doe een beroep op die raadsleder van Ouzoen om onmiddellijk die mensen ze kracht aan te schakelen, vooral deerness, householdens.
I appeal to the councillors of Ouzoen to switch on the power immediately again, especially in the case of indigenous people.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Want kracht wordt ook geaagd als een van de basisse diensten.
Electricity is also considered one of the basic services.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Wat ons gemeenschappen moet hebben.
Which our community needs.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Dan wil ik net vraag, wat heeft gewordt van die zonkracht gizer project?
And I want to ask, whatever became of the sun power gizer project?
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Ik wil graag weer gaan die project ervat worden.
I would like to know, will the project be resumed?
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Want zoals ze kan zien is het net een paar is, wat daar de zonkracht gizer project ingesloten is.
But for as far as I can see, there are only a few houses where these gizers have been installed.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
En dan wil ik ook graag weten, wanneer gaan die zonkracht winnplaats, wat beoog wordt om in Diesels Dorf opgesloten wordt, wanneer gaan dit realiseren?
And I also want to ask in relation to the sun power and wind power plant that was supposed to be erected at Diesels Dorf.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Meneer Jansen?
Want het is een goede alternatief voor de weerkracht wat taansplaats vindt.
Laat mij doen met onerbreken als ze blijven. Ons letten hier drie vraag, al reeds gevraagd.
Ik had net, ik had net een vraag rondom gas, wat zo dier geworden.
Ons, ons gaan je half minuut daarvoor geven als ze blijven.
Allow me to interrupt you because you've exceeded the time already and you're not, I haven't spoken on energy, so half minute.
Ik wil net heer die minister moeten dringen kijken aan die gasprijsen wat bije wach is, vooral voor ons mensen op uw landelijke gebieden.
The minister has to give urgent attention to the gas prices which are very high, especially in the rural areas.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Goeiedankje.
I thank you, program director.
Meneer Jansen, je hebt niet voor ons gezegd van wat er gebied hier komt als ze blijven.
Ouzoen.
Van Ouzoen, goeiendankje.
Can we have the next question here on my right, please?
Kan zo volgende vraag hier aan mijn rechterkant krijgen als ze blijven?
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Goeidag to the chairperson, all the members of the N C O P, delegates, officials, everybody here today. I am Jessica Fuller from Ladysmith in the Kanaland area.
Goeiemiddag aan de N R V P, al die ambtenaren wat hier woordig is vandaag, en ook die voorzitter, en ook die voorzitters, ik ben Jessica Fuller van de Kanaland gebied.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
I am part of a co-op registered as J M H P Primary Social Development Co-op. We are busy installing solar gizers in the Kanaland area.
Ik is deel van de co-op dat is registered as J M H P Primary, Primary Social Development Co-op, en ons is bezig met de instelling van zonkracht kettels.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
It is high pressure gizers, it no cost to the residents, and we intend to later install gizers in the whole Eden district area.
Het is een bije huidrek gizers, maar niks kost voor de inwoners steen. Ons stellen het in de vooruitstek, dat ons in de jullie Eden district later die gizers beskikbaar zal stellen.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
We want to express our gratitude to Department of Energy for the rebates for the solar project. However, I do have the following questions.
Onze graag ons dank, uitspreekt u in de Departement van Energie voor die afslag voor die zonkracht projecten, maar ik wil echter die volgende punt te maken.
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
By when will the D O E implement the new rebate system? It was postponed from end of February to end of March and now until the end of April 2015. Will the rebates be for low pressure and high pressure gizers or just one of the two?
Den wanneer gaat de Departement van Energie hier die ze stellen zal implementeer, want het is uitgesteld van de einde van februari naar de einde van maart, en nu is het weer uitgesteld naar de einde van april. En wanneer gaat u die afslag? Waarvoor gaat het van toepassing zijn, verhuidrek of laadrek gizers?
Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn. Ik wil het vertellen aan de mensen die hier zijn.
Will preference rebates be given to solar water heaters? Will preference rebates be given to solar water heaters with local content? What will the criteria be for a company to enroll for the DOE rebate program? And the last question, will there be regional DOE contacts that will assist with the rebate program regarding queries, rebates and installation?
As I said before, the solar water heaters are provided by local authorities and then what will be used for the water supply? It has been written by the department of energy. The program will contact the department of energy and the people who will be involved in the program in view of the consequences of the installation.
And then just one last point. The project will give the community access to employment opportunities. Not only people will be trained, but they will also be in the area for maintenance of this geysers. And the project will also result in food security. I want to just say it again, this is at no cost of the residents of an area.
And then one last point. This project will be provided by the community, not just for the short term, but also as a consequence of the installation for the geysers. And I want to reiterate that it will be used at a low cost for the residents.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Frau Fuller. And the people are still thinking that the people of Kanaland cannot be creative, then they are gravely mistaken.
Should there be people who are still thinking that the people of Kanaland cannot be creative, then they are gravely mistaken.
Can we now take the last question for the session that I chair, before my co-chair takes over again? I notice the lady here on my left. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Nospiu Bobelo, coming from Mossel Bay.
My name is Monsieur Bello from Mossel Bay.
I am part of the water committee in water three.
I am the water committee director of Water Three.
I am here to bring the complaints of the people in regards to the matter of electricity.
I would like the community to understand electricity here.
The main problem is that people are suffering when it comes to buying electricity from the municipality in Mossel Bay.
The problem is that the people of Mossel Bay rely on electricity from the municipality of Mossel Bay.
Our municipality is using an agent called Death Bag.
The municipality uses an agent with the name of Death Bag.
A person normally makes an arrangement with this particular institution called Death Bag, but sometimes it surprises me because when I buy electricity for 20 renz, that electricity is reduced for a lesser amount.
People are making arrangements with this Death Bag. But it is based on the electricity you get for the money you pay.
People are suffering in a great way. That is why now they have took upon themselves to use electricity illegally because of this predicament.
The people are suffering in Mossel Bay and therefore they have decided on the unsteady use of electricity in Mossel Bay.
Another problem is that since that communities of poor people, they were offered RTP houses. Now it surprises me that some people now are being asked to pay an amount of 40,000 or 30,000 to say that they are owing the municipality. So the people of Mossel Bay have delegated me to actually hear their request.
The people have received a price and now it is embarrassing me that there is a price set up and they must now pay 40,000 or 30,000 rand. And I would like, particularly the people of Mossel Bay, to address the problem.
We as water committee are not consulted by the municipality, but what we see is that a municipality takes a particular decision, not having consulted us as water committee.
We as water committee have decided what the municipality will accept.
Can Kosi, Mons Bello, hear you?
Thank you, Mons Bello, I hear you.
I want to check because the arrangement that we had was that all those energy questions, if we are done with them, you still have. All right. Let's take the next one then. Two minutes, I am here, two minutes.
Good morning, I am Katrina Hill from Skooman Zoo. I am glad to be here. I am from Bevils Drift. And I am from Kangoo Grove.
I am Katrina Hill, I stay in Ward Two, that goes from Bevils Hook to, Bevils Drift to, to Grootkraal. What hurts me the most when it comes to electricity in Ward Two? I want to know if there isn't a clause that maybe can be inserted that sees to that when the farm owners come and ask and apply for electricity for their ostriches, that it must not first be, that it must first be ensured that they provide electricity for their farm workers? Even the beautiful guesthouses that you see when you travel back from the Kangoo Caves to Ouzhurung in the evening and when you see those beautiful lights along the road, those are lights for ostriches and for cattle. And that really hurts me, thank you very much.
Good morning, people. My name is Ivan Trevor Basson, from Diesel, Diesel Dorf, Ward Nine.
I am Ivan, from Diesel Dorf.
My question is, the first question is BHP Bulletin, a big cooperative that smelt cruises in South Africa and Mozambique, they pay 50 cents per unit for electricity, because our people have to pay twice.
My first question is, BHP Bulletin, which is a huge company, which has got smelters in South Africa, they only pay 0.5%?
About 50 cents.
About 50 cents?
Per unit.
Per unit, whereas we have to pay a much higher rate.
When will you declare the apartheid regulations with the people to be harmed? Our people can't charge the electricity, they don't have any money. The main reason is that the land is paid, they pay 50 cents per unit.
My question is, when will the government change these arrangements, these apartheid government arrangements with big businesses and their profits are being taken out of the country?
Last question, if our people have electricity, will you charge so much for the electricity that you will really lose?
The farmers cut the power to, the power supplies to their workers or they charge us so much that we take home very little money afterwards.
Please give us a date or timeline for the supplying of wind and sun energy because the supplying of coal, coal energy and coal-fired engine energy is not working for us and Medupi is also not working for us. It is a crisis. My last question is very important. Can you make a regulation that people who have a regular service will not go to the strike? Especially, a good example is the Medupi power strike and the people are very frustrated and they are not going to charge the electricity for millions, billions of rand for the electricity.
And my last question is, can't it be determined that people who render an essential service are not allowed to strike? The workers constructing Medupi are constantly going on strike while we are suffering. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
You helping us to legislate better, so we'll listen and take that into consideration. The next question, please.
The next question, please.
Good morning, Minister. I am Maralena Brickwell from Diesel Dorf.
Good afternoon, Minister. I am Maralena Brickwell from Diesel Dorf.
I would like to ask for him, as minister, that he pay attention to Diesel Dorf community. Our community in Diesel Dorf is behind the scenes. Our electricity is destroyed. That is people in our community who have 10 years to 20 years of electricity destroyed.
I would like to request the minister directly that you should please attend to our people in Diesel Dorf because we are being fed from the crumbs of the table. There are people in Diesel Dorf whose electricity has been cut off for 10 or disconnected for 10 to 15 years.
If we want our people to make arrangements, then we will see that you have to pay a lot for your electricity and the consequences will be for Ouzhurung, that our electricity is destroyed.
And should we, should our people go to make arrangements? Then we are told that we have to pay a certain amount of money to get our electricity reconnected and this comes from Ouzhurung.
I would like to ask for the minister that he pay attention to our 100 renz of electricity because of the electricity, the units that we get flow through our water.
And then I also want to ask the minister that you should pay attention to the following matter, that if we pay, if we buy 100 renz electricity, then we only get along for a week and a half because the units that we buy with that run like water out of a tap.
And my complaint is that, and my plea is that I ask him, if he is willing, that he can't provide solar panels.
And my plea is, isn't it possible for you to supply us with solar panels?
And I hope my question will be attended to, Minister. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maralena. I heard your question. We are not ministers here, but we will ensure that your questions do get to the minister. Is there a last person to raise a question now? I don't see anybody at the microphones.
Is there a last person to ask for the question? I don't know anyone at the microphone.
The people here on this side raise their hands first when I raise the question. Can we ask one of the two people there? You'll decide which one of the two. Please, you are the one who will ask the question. And then we will give you the last question.
And then this will then, with your approval, be the last question.
Thank you, Chad. My name is En Madjin from Mossel Bay.
Thank you for the question, I am En Madjin from Mossel Bay.
I am also here about an energy complaint. The municipality issuing a receipt of the energy with the water account together.
I am also here in view of electricity and this is the municipality that pays for water and electricity together. Ek is gra, ek is ook hier ten opzichte van de klacht over electricity here, en dit is die municipaliteit wat de rekening voor water en electricity samen uitrek.
Be kungena uti umbane utengiso wotwa, ek amelika escom, u amanzi abewotwa, ka upatala manswa ko upatala, kubakalekutala itala, ape mansini, ka uyopatala, ka utengumbane utala italala ko onalo.
Is it not possible that these accounts could be separate? The electricity account paid alone and the water account, because the way it now happens, you go and buy electricity, whilst buying electricity, there they would deduct money for the water.
Is het nie moeilijk dat hier niet twee rekeningen van elkaar geskijken wordt nie? Want op je omelijk, wat op je omelijk gebeere is, jy zal gaan electricity koop, en wanneer die electricity koop, dan wordt daar geld afgetrek van jou, voor die, voor wat die verschillende is op water.
Putaka kataloba una italal kulungoba se abatala konak, ka utingoba, i detay beka yo, i e i kriti, i kresonga patalan.
They do not even care whether, what amount you owe, like for instance, if it's a big amount of money, but the only thing that they are using is that they have got a deadline, that they say, comes that deadline, you should have paid, and if you have not complied, then they are doing this.
Allegene is om waterbedrag of hoeveel geld die betaal nie, maar dit, zelfs helle is het een groot bedrag, die helle ze nog mauw helle, bekommert is, is die speerdatum, en als helle zien dat jy het in die speerdatum nog nie betaal het nie, dan zal helle die nodige doen.
Ne units ezisi, kileyo tinasi ti, utwandi rand ufumani eighteen point indo.
The units that decrease on twenty ren, we will get eighteen point something.
Voor twintig rand krijgen ons achttien punt iets yeneere.
Kotoa se abona goma East End Cape, bando ba tenga ko escom, ba ufumani units is os goma twenty five comma something.
You see people in the East End Cape also buys from Escom, that they would get their units in twenty five point something.
Jy zal zien dat mensen van die oeska koop okrach van Escom af, en helle zal yeneere ter waarde van vijfentwintig punt iets krijgen.
Kubebe konu duora escom, ben sautelam, naga strakse seleka, sheoba, i ti ni nindoba umbane, su bonekwe, nindawinselo tengswanga, kotoa tinasi mesu tengan,enzela eskalisai.
If there was a person from Escom, I would fire questions to this person and refer this person to what we see in the other areas, the energy prices being different from our prices, and I would have posed questions around this to this particular person.
Indien daar de persoon van Escom vandaag het in woordig was, dan zou ik direkt aan daar die persoon vraag gefraad, vooral ten opzichte van die, van die, van die verschijnsel dat prijs van electricity in verschillende plekken anders is, en ek zal dan specifiek voor daar die persoon vragen, die verband gefraad.
Na lendo ye free units imland, ya yo tuka, ngoba kan daselingani, ukabanda ba ni kwa ka kul, ukabanda ba ni kwa ka ne.
Even now, I am shocked to hear about these free units, that even others get higher than the others, we are not on the same rating even on that.
Ek is geskok om te hoor van die gratis yeneere, waar sommel gemeenten meer krijgen is wat ander krijgen, ons wordt nie gelijk behandeld in die verband nie.
Kuba se ngengekotreeshandi zauma, kenayobandi tungela, nabanyabandi kotoa konas, niti zinto, esikalanga zo, kutubalombane, kumaspa la, engos.
Uh, because of time, I will now stop here, because there are still several other people, but we are having a lot of complaints that we can raise concerning our municipalities in relation to this uh energy quest.
Als gevolg van tijspaperen kan ik nou hier opover, daar is baia ander mensen wat ook iets wil zeggen, maar daar is baia ding wat ons kan zeggen, over die municipaliteiten en electricity, danki.
Thank you very much, Mrs Magina, for that contribution.
Baia danki voor daar bijdra.
We have come to a time that we have agreed to conclude the session at.
Ons is nou die tijd stip bereik, waar, waar ons hoor ingesemmet, waar die sessie afgesleid zal worden.
Be kway kasha apositjongo, basshankatela imeko yomstewenzomsha.
Out of respect for the promise that we have made and sticking to that promise, we are unfortunately not going to allow additional questions to be raised.
Uit respect voor die belofte wat ons gemaakte, en om daar hobe die belofte wat ons gemaakte, gaan ons ongelukkig niet toelaat het verdere vraag of vraag aan worden.
So ne lesi, tri ne ne si kribo, ngelishwa, asiso fume laoba, kubeko emine, imebuso, yonke swayo, okakalukunji.
We want to now say thank you very much to the members from different communities that has made their contributions.
Ons van nou baia danki si aan die leden van de gemeenschap, het helle bijdraas geleveret.
We know...
Engosi kumalungu, ek komitie onke, nina babene karelo.
We are pleased asking you to not forget that tomorrow is going to be a very important session, when the president of South Africa, Mrs Cyril Ramaphosa, will be here with you.
Ons vraa helle bij mooi om nie te vergeet dat more baia belangrike sessie gaan weesie, wanneer die ad young president van Zed Africa, meneer Cyril Ramaphosa, is al toespreek.
Ningali valingo omson gomso balule ke kakolu, sekela monga meli weswe lagowetu, umnumza nausirelka Ramaphosa, wo be kaza apa, pagatikwe tu.
Thank you very much for giving us the time to listen to.
Engosi kakoo, os nigitaya salituna.
Baia danki dat die voor ons die tijd gegeet en had om nou i te luister.
The... Session is closed and we are adjourned.
Die sessie is gesleid.